Okay, good evening fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests. We're about to start the meeting even though it's a bit later than scheduled. Let me introduce myself again. My name is Andre Morey as you can see on the screen. And tonight I am the SAA. And I will inform you the housekeeping rules during this Magical Bali Toastmasters Club meeting. Before the meeting, I would like you to encourage for you to check the internet connection, camera, microphone, and also make sure you charge your devices. And yeah, to save bandwidth, maybe it's better for you to close other browsers as well. And if you feel like the connections is a bit poor, you can probably pause your camera. But please, if your internet connection is good, make sure your video or camera is on everyone. And then please keep in mind that we are in a professional environment of Toastmaster International Meeting. So we want to present ourselves in good dress, dress well, sit upright in a quiet place with a good lighting as well. Yeah, and please, if you want to do something else, you can basically pause your camera. So it's not distracting other participants of the meeting. And then if you wanna eat later, you can eat during break time everyone. And then during the meeting, please mute or turn off your microphone unless you're speaking. And let minimize destruction and appreciate people who are speaking. And again, as I said earlier, turn on your camera devices. And also you can show justice by using the icons, smiley and everything, like agreeing with yes, no, or virtual clapping hands. And then if you wanted to say just good, you can show thumbs up or symbols that when you cannot hear. Yeah, so you can use your justice. And please stand up and look at your camera when you're delivering speech. Yeah, try, yeah. But if you are not able to do that, you can sit down and then make sure you're clearly visible. And then please call out name. And this is a bit of suggestion. So please, you can switch view between gallery and speakers. It's on the right corner of your screen. And then you can also use the chat, yeah? If you want to communicate with others, especially when someone is delivering a speech. So you're not disturbing meeting. And remember to also look the timer when you're delivering the speech, yeah? And alright, yeah. So fellow Toastmasters and guests, are you ready for this meeting? Cool, yeah. Now I would like to call Magical Bali Toastmasters Club President to give an opening remarks. And please give round of big applause for Batoro Aji, our president, and also Gramarion for tonight's meeting.
And also GE.
And GE, wow.
Yes, alright. Thank you SAA, Andre Morey, and everybody, welcome back. And nice to see you all again here tonight. And yeah, welcome, welcome to Magical Bali Toastmasters Meeting, especially to be to our first timer guest, Kat. I'd like to welcome you. So maybe you can unmute yourself and then tell us. I believe that it's not everybody listen. I think it's good to know where you are from, what club, and then what programs you hear. How did you find out about us?
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Kat. I'm from Belgium. I'm a member of the Toastmasters Antwerp Club. I joined the club in March, so only one month. And Harlina told me about this meeting because I told her I was learning Indonesian and she suggested this meeting. So that's how I found out about you guys.
Okay, thank you, Kat. So all the way from Belgium, again, welcome to Magical Bali Toastmasters. And yeah, since everybody is here, mostly members and obviously a Toastmaster. So I don't have to explain what Toastmasters is. And you guys must know that in every meeting, we will have the Toastmasters of the meeting. Or in this, in this meeting or tonight, I'd like to call the man of the night. So the man of the night for this meeting is going to be Dennis Ria. So Dennis Ria, I'll give the control to you to guide us through to this meeting. Screen is yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President. Alright, you saw before we start the meeting. So our theme for today meeting is about nurse day. Why we discover about this? Because in the COVID time, usually we forgot that nurse is important person behind the scene. Because usually we remember that there are many COVID case, many doctor died. But we doesn't remember how many nurse is being victim of this. So I think we need to also give applause for the nurse. Because they always give the best even though they will not be recognized as a man behind the scene. And for today meeting, we will have three session. And for that, I will, for today, I will be led by our GE. To explain what role that need to be done. So let's be welcome our GE, Batoro Aji.
Hello again. Hope you're not getting bored already. Alright, so yeah, as a GE, I will pay attention and then observe the whole meeting. So take note on what is good and what can be improved on. And here I have team to help me to knock down on the speakers about the ah grammar and timer. So for the first, so for the first theme, I would like to call the Table topic evaluator, which is Amelia. Since, since tonight's meeting is caring is the essence of nursing. I actually asked everybody, what do you care the most? And since I haven't known yours yet, so Amelia, what do you care the most before you explain your role?
What I care the most? Myself?
Yourself, okay. You, okay, you care the most about yourself.
We have to care for ourselves first before we can care to other people, right?
That's true, that's right. I agree with you. Okay, Amelia, you can explain your role.
Okay, tonight I will have as a table topic evaluator. So even though it's impromptu speech, but I believe that it's still a speech and we still can learn from it. And it's impromptu speech is really special. So even though I will be the evaluator, but just relax and enjoy the table topic session later on. I will deliver the report later on in evaluation, in the end of the meeting in evaluation session. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you Amelia. And the second role I would like to call is actually myself as a Gramarion. So what do I care the most? I think I would agree. I care more, what I care the most is myself. Because I'm kind of like an anti-sentiment person. Well kidding. Alright, so yeah, as a Gramarion, I will observe and then also take note on what is the, on grammatical errors and improper language as well as some good usage of languages and also counting the word of the day. And the word of the day for today is solicitous. And what is the meaning of that word? Is characterized by or showing interest or concern. For example, she was always solicitous about the welfare of her students. And another example is he is attentive even solicitous and there is that accepts a dinner date. So try to use as many word of the day as you can in when you're speaking. And that's the role for Gramarion. And for the next role, I would like to call on the ah counter, which is Sunny. So Sunny, since the meeting tonight is about caring and I haven't known yours yet. So Sunny, before explaining your role, what do you care the most about? Yeah, what do you care the most actually?
Wow, thank you Aji. I think I joined the meeting on time. It's my turn now. What I care the most at this moment? It's human behavior, I think.
Look, human behavior, okay.
Yeah, yes. Because now we are facing...
Oops, you're muted. Okay.
Because now we are facing a tough situation. I realize some of the human are getting crazy or stressed or hectic or panicked, right? Some might be like suicide or something. So I think it's, yeah, what I care about is this.
Okay.
From my job today, it's to be a counter, yes. The most important, the most important thing that I'm gonna note down is I'm gonna note everything that sounds unnecessary sound and unnecessary words. Unnecessary sounds like are, which is you may action because of your nervous or maybe you are too excited. Sometimes you will mention repetition word as well. That's it's considered unnecessary words. And then the other role that I take today is ballot. It's a privilege for me today to take two roles. So yeah, I will announce my report and the following at the end of the meeting. Thank you, and back to GE, Aji.
Yeah, thank you Sunny. Alright, so our last role picker is timer. And our timer today is Divda Dewauni. And what she care the most is mental health. So yeah, Divda, please explain your role.
Yeah, actually, just maybe similar to Sunny. Because currently it's pandemic situation, so everybody feels like hectic anxiety or depression or stress. So at the moment, at this situation, I think what most important for me today is mental health. And for my task for today, I will be your timer. So everybody, my job for tonight is a timer. As a timer, I will note and time and alert every speaker of the time they have left using green signal, yellow signal, and red signal. For prepared speech speaker, you will have five to seven minutes to deliver your speech. On five minutes, I will alert you. I will show you the green signal, six minute yellow signal, and seven minutes red signal. Before the table topic session, you will have one to two minutes. Now will alert you by green signal when you already speak for one minutes, one and a half minutes, yellow signal, and two minutes, red signal. And for the evaluator, you will have two to three minutes to deliver your speech. Now will show green signal when you already reached two minutes, yellow signal, two and a half minutes, and red signal when you already speak for three minutes. And each of the speaker will have thirty seconds to wrap up your speech. So back to you GE, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that's all from me, GE and the team. We will back in the evaluation session, in the last session of this tonight's meeting. So yeah, I give control back to Tom to continue the meeting.
Okay, thank you GE. So in Toastmaster meeting, we have three session. The first session is prepare speed for people to speak for five until seven minutes. And the second session is for guest with this table topic session. Guest can try to have a impromptu speed. So you can have, if you in the hard situation, like when your boyfriend or girlfriend asking, where are you from? So you can answer that way because you already prepare in using impromptu speed. And the last session is just the uniqueness of Toastmaster is evaluation session. It is, uh, because in everything what we do, if you want to improve to be the best, we need to have, to be evaluated. So now let's be continue to the first session. And for this first session, I will, uh, I will ask the evaluator for Good Day Udi Apriadi. If IU Vira Wati to explain about the fit detail about Good Day. Time is your, you know.
Thank you, Danny. Okay, fellow Toastmasters and guests, tonight I would like to introduce the first speaker. He is the Diudi Apriadi. He is a tax consultant who works as a partner in a consulting firm in Bali specialized for the foreign investment. And he loves reading, doing a lot of team building activities. And he also loves to play golf as well as table tennis. He joined Toastmaster because he want to improve his leadership and also public speaking skill. Tonight, he's going to deliver his level one project three, research and presenting. And his speech title will be Ease of Doing Business from Tax Perspective. And his time will be five to seven minutes. So Good Day Udi Apriadi, time is yours.
Okay, thank you IU. First, I would like to share my, the presentations. I would like to share the screen. I would like to have a minute. Okay, is it visible?
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, good evening everyone. In, in this meeting, I would like to share about omnibus or called as job creation law. Especially from the ease of doing business from tax perspective. I believe maybe some of you have heard about the omnibus law, job creation law. This omnibus law has changed significantly in Indonesia. Has a change around, if I'm not mistaken, around seventy-nine legislations and around more than one thousand article, yeah, in Indonesia. So this much simplify the regulation to encourage investment. So today I would like to share about the ease of doing business from the tax perspective. One of the cluster of the omnibus law from eleven cluster. And yeah, this is the chronology, the journey of the omnibus that we know during the pandemic, the government has issued some tax incentive to help, yeah, the investor and also the company, the business to survive from the COVID. Because COVID has hit all the business in, yeah, over the world and especially in Indonesia. So yeah, during 2020, there are some incentive has been issued. And also during 2020, so start from December 2019, the omnibus law bill has been proposed. And then government also has issued some regulation to reduce our corporate income tax rate to encourage the investment and also to compete with another country. And then in 2020, 2020, the omnibus, the omnibus law bill has been legalized and then has been implemented in November 2020. And yeah, also has been issued implementation regulations, government regulation number nine, 2021, and also the Ministry of Finance Act in number twenty-nine. This is now the implementation regulation that we used to, yeah, to get the benefit of the omnibus. So the background of a cluster of ease of doing business of taxation is to import to strengthen Indonesian economy, encouraging investment to upshot the workforce optimally, amendment of various statutory provision, and also to maintain and increase a tax revenue. I have summarized some critical points, some highlights of the regulations. Because the omnibus law has subject or changed some tax rule regulations in Indonesia. This is some point that I summarize regarding, yeah, which intends to increase the investment funds in Indonesia. Such as we have reduced, the government has reduced the corporate income tax rate from twenty-five percent become, become twenty-two percent and become twenty percent in 2020-20. And also our government has eliminate tax from overseas and also domestic dividend with term and conditions and any other, yeah, change that intended to increase the investment funds in Indonesia. And then also the intention is to encouraging voluntary compliance. Tax office has, tax authority has reduced the administrative penalty. They reduce, yeah, the penalty in order to encourage the voluntary compliance. And here is some summary of the regulation which intended to increase the legal uncertainties and also regarding the territorial system for specific for resident that I will share with you, put a detail in next following slides. And the last one is the to promoting equal business climate within the nations. This by, yeah, using the ID number or CTA P for some transaction. So the tax authority can catch up all the transactions to encourage equal business climate within the nation. So this is to minimize the possibility, the company or the business owner to do a tax evasion, tax avoidance, which will impact to the equal business climate between the nations. Alright, so yeah. In omnibus law also has emphasized regarding a tax resident, who being Indonesian tax residence. So according to our legislation, the omnibus law, Indonesian tax resident, the term and condition being Indonesian tax resident is a domicile in Indonesia and physical, and physically present in Indonesia more than one hundred eighty-three days. And within a taxable year residing in Indonesia and extending to domicile in Indonesia. So this is the main requirement if you want to be Indonesian tax residence. And then who is classified as a foreign tax resident? Is individual who is not domiciled in Indonesia or has fiscal prison in Indonesia less than time test, one hundred eighty-three days, and also Indonesian citizen who residing offshore, yeah? So this is one of the clause that has emphasized or predetermined by the tax authority. Because in our previous regulations, many confusions regarding the status of being foreign tax resident. Because many Indonesian goes to offshore, they have tax ID but no longer stay in Indonesia and registers as Indonesian tax resident like in Singapore, in Hong Kong, or in Australia. Then, yeah, in our previous regulation, they will have dual resident. And now with this omnibus law, it's clearly mentioned that's one they live for Indonesia. And they are, they would like to choose being in tax resident in another country. Then they can, they can apply or submit being a non-tax resident in Indonesia. Okay. And then, yeah, this is regarding the territorial section for the foreigners. In our previous regulations, Indonesia subject worldwide income for Indonesian tax residents. So if you are Indonesian tax residence, your income from abroad or from domestic will subject to income tax in Indonesia. So that's we call as worldwide income system. And now since the omnibus law issued, there are territorial taxation system for foreigners. If you have certain skill and can transfer the skill in Indonesia. So here, we just make the illustrations, some illustration for you. And also maybe from this illustration, you can, yeah, understand deeply regarding the omnibus law. Because of the limited of the time, I cannot share all of the informations. Yeah, that's the important things of the omnibus law. I think that's it from me. Thank you. Back to you, GE, Tom.
Thank you, Good Day Upi. So I know now what the change in omnibus law that I really want to have. Because I, I as a employee of company, I afraid that I'm being threatened by the company because I don't know the rule. But thanks God you tell me the rule, so I know what my duty. So for the second fit by John Manurung, it will be evaluated by Amelia who likes carry. So let's be welcome, Amelia, to explain the role.
Thank you, Danny. Next, our speaker is John. John love meeting new people, learning about new experience, culture, and personality. And he will deliver the project of level two, level two project one, pathway presentation mastery. And the purpose of this project is for a member to learn about different communication style and identify his or her primary style. Also share the impact of his or her style on others. Okay, please welcome John Manurung. The title of his speech is, wait, Influence People by Speech. Influence People by Speech, John Manurung.
Am I audible?
Yes, but little bit soft, so you can, yeah, speak louder.
Okay. Vin? Let me greet you from my warming heart. Fellow Toastmaster and guests who are attending this online meeting and people on YouTube who are watching this meeting as well. How are you? I hope you all have good condition and great day. If you are, if you have any problem now, listen, there is no problem, even pandemic, that we cannot face. Because there is always hope in every situation in our life. And now ladies and gentlemen, I want you think, one, your problem that you face today or a thing that ruin your day in five seconds. Now, say like this, I'm strong, all is well. I'm strong, all is well, over and over again in five seconds, okay? Loudly and powerfully. One, two, three, go.
I'm strong.
All is well.
All is well.
All is well. All is well.
If you finish, please type done on the checkbox. Okay. And for the last time, let's say together, I'm strong and all is well. One, two, three, go.
I'm strong.
I'm strong, all is well.
Okay, fellow Toastmaster and lovely guest, I wanna tell you my story. I guarantee this is gonna be interesting. In 2015 to 2018, I taught English at home while getting college. I never had experience on teaching, even how to be good teacher. I was learning by doing. Fortunately, I was learning by doing. Fortunately. I had. More than one hundred. Students. And I had three friends to help me on teaching. The students liked the way I taught, liked the way I forced them to speak English. The way I motivate them to be better and better. This is the interesting of this story. I remember my students who I taught for one year, Novita and Govinda. They were on the, on grade three in junior high school. And in two thousand sixteen, I registered them to Sumatra English Olympiad. Provided by University of Rio. For speech contest. At the moment before Novita and Govinda move forward to the stage. I talk. To each of them. How do you feel, Govinda? Nervous, sir. Listen, are you with me? I want you say, I can, I can, I can, one hundred times. And say, I can. In one hundred. I can. And loudly and powerfully. And I did it. To to Novita. As a result, they got ranking big twenty. Of fifty-two participants. Oh, that was amazing. I was so proud of them. I didn't even expect that because I just wanted to make sure. They can speak English in front of people and people can understand what they talk about. That's it. I hope Novita and Govinda will never forget me. And the story. Ladies and gentlemen. If you deliver speech. With good purpose. As long as you do sincerely, trust me, at least. Somebody will be influenced. Will find a magic words into your speech. Here we are. The place. Where we can hear and find many magic words, magic speeches. And the place where we can meet many member of magical value Toastmaster. So from my speech, you will know my communication style are direct and supportive. So ladies and gentlemen, let's influence people around the world. By our speeches. Are you with me? Thank you. Back to Tom.
Okay, thank you for, for a great way to inform people to the meeting. So we will. Listen and. Have known that your communication style. So for the. Now, we will go to the. Last speaker, uh with this DeDe Mahotama, who will be evaluated by. Natali Chahyadi. So let's be welcome Natali Chahyadi.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Danny. It's my privilege to evaluate Toastmaster DeDe for tonight. He's going to do his project from uh his part. It's gonna be level two project one, understanding your leadership style. As you can see, he's already taking on the leadership stance. And so I'm, I'm pretty sure he's ready for the speech. To give you a little bit intro about DeDe, he is a proud Balinese and a fresh graduate. From an international relations uh major. He loves to read, traveling, playing video games, learning multiple languages, and watching films. His purpose of the project for tonight is to identify his primary leadership style. And for him to share some aspect of it with the audience. With five to seven minutes, please welcome Toastmaster DeDe Mahotama. Time to take on missions. Time to take on missions, Toastmaster DeDe Mahotama.
Uh, am I audible?
Yeah.
When it comes to leadership, I was inspired by the quotes from two people. Their names are John C. Maxwell and Friedrich Nietzsche. American author and speaker John C. Maxwell once said. Leaders must be close enough to relate to others, but far enough to motivate them. And a German philosopher Friedrich Nietzsche once said, to do great things is difficult. But to command great things is more difficult. And yes, the fellow Toastmasters. The these quotes have become my conscience and it keeps telling me that. Come on, DeDe, be a leader, be a man who is ready to put in charge and don't hold back. Because you are inspired to be an influential leader. And and for and. And 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 for that matter, so to felt my fellow Toastmasters, I was utterly. Happy by uh that that my conscious uh said these things uh to me. So. Ladies and so ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmasters and friends. It took me some time to have an opportunity to demonstrate my ability to lead. But I finally got the opportunity when I was in university. I'm excited to share with you my experience about being a member of the fundraising and co-leader during my college years. I was a new student at the Udana University and it has become a something standard. For a new student to be faced with the option to join one of many campus organizations. I was reluctant at first, but I learned when becoming a member of a campus organization. It can be a great addition to my CV. So I decided to break about the boundary and give it a try. During the first few months, there was a group of seniors who introduced us. To the International Relations Student Corps Organization. That was a bit of mouthful, but bear with me, it will get easier, I promise. They hold, they held a conference where there were forums between international relations with students throughout Indonesia. They desperately needed some newcomers to fill in the vacant positions. You can imagine that the senior, the method that my senior used, it was something. Uh that looks straight out of the Godfather film when Don Corleone said. I'm gonna make an offer you cannot refuse. So eventually, I I chose to be the member of the fundraising section. The first task my se- my superior in the fundraising section had me do was to go and look for funds at. The at the local bank called Bank Les- Lestari. Also, it was mandatory to give him a suggestion about other good places to look for funds or sponsors. To support our conference. We did this by making a proposal for a sponsoring application and then submitting it to the address places. Submitting the proposal is not difficult. However, the challenge is receiving enough funds. Sometimes the amount of funds we receive is below the target and we had to find other ways to increase funds. To fit the budget of our event. What we did was open donations on the road, selling meal package coupons. During this time, I was quite solicitous about this condition. So I donated as much as I could on behalf of my family's business. Other challenges that we faced was when we had to supervise the entire conferences. One conference could last for almost a staggering eighteen hours. And we must always prepare the consumption like snacks and bottles of many, many bottles of water. We also had to prepare transportation and medical needs for the students. There was this one case when one of the students who was feeling ill and could not continue the conference any further. Our senior instructed us to give her enough medical treatment and then we took her to the hotel, which is. Pretty far away from my campus. I have to admit, those days were the most exhausting time in my life, but thankfully. The event went as expected and we received an award certificate from the dean, from the dean. From and for my teachers as well. Yay! Congratulations to me and my team as well. From that experience, I asked myself, what have I learned from this? Well, fellow Toastmasters, I have learned leaders should be the figure who can nurture you, just like how my seniors nurtured me. I said this because my senior appointed me as a member or co-chair. He patiently taught me how things should be done, how to give a good impressions. And he always encouraged me whenever I feel nervous before the start. The starting the event and or the conference. And I'm glad that my senior is the one. He's the one, he's the one who who saw the two potential within me, even one I still cannot see. Therefore, again, I'm glad he managed to make me what I am now, a leader who can coach and motivate others. You could, you could all, you could also say that coaching is my leadership style. I one hundred percent believe. All of us are destined to be the leader in your own way. So when will you take on your missions to find your leadership style? Back to you, Tom.
Wow, great. So we are, we are our leader. And think that's uh all the speakers, so let's be welcome our timer to. To say that the timer report. Dita, time is here.
Yeah, so everybody in this. Session are eligible to be voted. Yeah, from DeDe Udik, seven thirty, John, five forty-nine, and DeDe, six forty-three. Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, thank you, Dita, for the quick timer report. Now, let's be move to the second session, which is table topic session. Who will be led by very funny person. You can call. Him as Fat Yusuf. So let's be welcome our funny guy today, Fat Yusuf. And uh.
Thank you very much, Tom. Tom, can I, can you, can I share the screen?
Yes, yes, uh wait, I just so, yes, you can.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're ready.
Ladies and gentlemen, now I'm going to lead the awaited session. Everybody wants to speak. This is table topic session. The time will be one to two minutes. So be sure when you are a speaker, pin the timer. One minute, the timer will change or return the light into green. And then one thirty second, it will be yellow. And two minutes, she'll turn red. And you are given thirty seconds to finish your speech. So please be sure, don't stop before one minute. And please stop after the red light is on, or you can have two minute thirty second. And also for today, the word of the day is solitious. So you can use that word if it is possible. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I prepared six, five to six quote. Anybody want to try? You can write in the chat box or you can just shout it. Anyone want to try? Especially those who haven't spoken yet. Not Natalie. Natalie has been speaking, will be speaking as an evaluator. Anybody? Come on. Nobody wants.
Fat Yusuf, I nominated our guest from.
Yeah.
Adam City.
Yeah, Cat Cat from Belgium.
Cat. Cat from Belgium. Cat, are you ready? Yes, good. Now let me share my screen. Oh. This will be very easy one. This one, can you see it? Uh oh. Here. Happiness is the highest form of love. Cat, happiness is the highest form of love. The time is one to two minutes. Your voice is a little bit low.
Yes, I forgot my microphone. Sorry, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna start again.
Okay.
Okay.
Time uh, let's start again.
Happiness is the highest form of love. I don't know if I completely agree with this statement. Because happiness for me can be in small things as well. For example, waking up and hearing the birds uh making noise, feeling the sunshine. Waking up to a nice message from one of my friends. These small things make me very happy. Also, good food is one of them. And. Meeting up with friends, moving my body. Um being in this Toastmasters meeting makes me very happy as well. So I don't think I completely agree with this statement that happiness is the highest form of love. Love for me has other qualities, for example, um. Caring for other people, being solicitous about what's going on in their life. But also hugging and embracing people, things I haven't done for more than a year, I think. So. I don't think I agree with the statement that happiness is the highest form of love. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cat. I love being hugged, especially by pretty woman like you. Thank you, thank you very much. Now, you you have got the privilege to choose anybody to speak. Can you choose anyone?
Yeah, I have to, I have to look for people first. Wait, um I'm gonna nominate um Natalie.
Natalie. Okay, Natalie. Natalie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here by you, so.
You must be there. Don't leave me alone.
Okay.
Here is Natalie for you. Health is the greatest gift. Natalie, health is the greatest gift. One to two minutes.
Hello, Toastmaster, ladies and gentlemen. Before the pandemic, we always associate our. Uh money with our wealth, but after pandemic and during this pandemic, we found out that health is the new wealth. So it's an amazing realization that I found out because I realized that. So far, when we're so busy working, trying to make money, trying to make a living, we forgot to actually live. And we forgot to actually cherish what we already had. I believe that health is the greatest gift and it's not just because it's the new wealth, because it's something that. because it's something that we bring on every single day. If we are not healthy, we cannot do what we need to do and we cannot achieve what we want to achieve. Let me tell you a story about my mom. My mom now is seventy-one years old, and I'm so thankful that she is healthy. In the middle of this challenging situation, whenever we pray, we always pray that God grant us provision and also protection and help. Because without help, there won't be any, anything that we can do, um, like what we wanted to do. So I'm so thankful with the gift of health that God has graced us. So we can still, you know, together, we can still enjoy our time and we can still work. We can still live and cherish our moments together. So ladies and gentlemen, if you forget to cherish your greatest gift, look no further, because it's already here inside of you. Your health is your greatest gift. Back to you, Dita Miusso.
Thank you very much. So I am very happy because my this time I am still healthy. Thank you, Natalie. You remind me of that. Natalie, can you choose somebody else?
Oh, yeah.
Number three?
Uh, I'll, hang on, let me see who hasn't got any role. Oh, I'll give it to Robin then, because he doesn't.
Robin? It's Robin here.
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
I'm not going to share my screen. I'm going to give you the question directly from my mouth.
Alright.
Right, listen to this. Hmm.
Is that a question?
But yeah, I'm looking for that. Okay, this one is good for you. Robin, nothing in life is to be feared. It is only to be understood. Nothing in life is to be feared. It's only to be understood. You get it? One to two minutes. Time is yours.
Life. The moment you're born, you think that, wow, I want to do great things. I wanted to get out of my mother's womb and to see the light. But yet you never expected that life would be so challenging. You didn't know how to speak, didn't know how to communicate, and all you, you, you got to do is just to cry. And that's how you get to communicate with the world. It was scary at that time because you didn't know how to communicate. And all you, you got to do is just to try it out. Fellow Toastmasters and dear guests, you see, life is like that. Ever since the very beginning of our life, whenever you have a challenge in your life right now, I don't know what you do at work, I don't know what you have in your life. But everything happens for a reason. And this is where you have to know how to embrace that fear. Because you fear the challenges that you have. And it's true, it's very, very challenging. It's, it's struggling to you, but you need to know how to embrace that. Because by embracing your fears, you'll be able to understand what's the reason behind it. What's the reason behind every single challenge in your life? And fellow Toastmasters, ladies and gentlemen, at the end of the day, you will be able to learn a lesson, and that lesson you'll be able to teach your friends, your family, and not only that, your children, because they will start their life as well. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Wow, Robin. I still remember when I was born. I didn't know what was. I cried. You're right. Thank you very much. Robin, can you, uh, can you point out somebody else?
Point someone else?
Yeah.
Um, okay, let's see. Let's see, let's just arrive.
You can read my names. Yep.
Can I take the president?
The president? Why not?
Oh, oh. I have too many roles. It's.
Too many roles.
I don't know, I don't know you have many roles. Okay, let's pick, um.
Diane probably, the new guest coming.
Hi Diane, it's your turn to speak in Table topics.
Diane? You're ready, Diane?
Ah, hi everyone.
Hi.
I'm listening.
Hi.
Okay, I'll share my screen, Diane. Wait. Ah, this one is for you. Happy mind, happy life. Do you agree or disagree? Happy mind, happy life. Time is one to two minutes.
Uh, this is for me?
Yeah, for you.
Oh, okay.
Only for you, not for Robin.
Okay. Healthy mind, healthy lives. Fellow Toastmaster, healthy mind, healthy lives. I believe one of the key for happiness is to have healthy mind. Why? Because all physical, uh, in our body, it's come from our minds. So it was happened for me three years ago when I was in my, uh, college. I have like, maybe low self-esteem. And I think the problem is not come from my, the real problem, it's come from my minds. So I have the experience when I try to practice my minds, it will affect my life too. So I believe healthy mind, healthy lives. Thank you. Back to Tom.
Thank you, Diane. Healthy mind, healthy thing. I hope you will join our, our Toastmaster Club so you can practice more and more. Thank you very much. Next, I would like to invite Dita, as you have been nominated by Natalie. Dita, I'm here. Yeah, it's no problem. Natalie is going to take over the time.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm next.
Here is for you, Dita. Take care of your body. It's the only home you have. Take care of your body. It's the only home you have. One to two minutes.
Fellow Toastmaster and guests, do you like to travel? You might like to travel from places to places, not live with your family, meet new friends, join new community. But do you know what is the most important in your life? You can, you can go travel anywhere, you can be everywhere. But if you don't think that your body is your home, you will feel lost every time. As we are traveling, we might miss our family, our friends, our old schools. We thought at first that our past is our home, but it's not true. Because our life are the most important place is our body. So before we think that anyone, anywhere is a home for us, we have to understand that our body is our home. And we have to take care our body the best that we can do. Because before we be happy from others, before we get happy from others, we need to take care of ourselves first. Thank you. Back to you, Piusso.
Thank you. We have to take care of ourselves, our body. Okay, may I ask the Tom, do I still have got one more chance or?
Yeah, yeah, you can. You can, you can.
Again. So who is another guest? I will give the chance to the guests. Is there any other guests? No?
I think no. Yeah, Dita can choose probably.
Dita can choose, go on.
I'd like to choose Wira.
Wira?
Thanks, Nat.
Yes.
Wira, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, I thought, you know, I, I met so many Wiras. In Jakarta, there is a boy named Wira as well.
Mostly male, Wira.
Okay, sorry. I thought it was him. Okay, Wira, let me share the screen. This one for you, Wira. Good health is not something we can buy. Toastmaster Wira, good health is not something we can buy. You can have thirty seconds to think, or you want to answer directly.
Okay.
Answer? Okay.
Um, talking about health, I used to not really put priority on health. But when it come into this situation, now I realize that health is very important. Whenever I see somebody who close to me is sick, I feel really hurt. It seems like we can buy anything, but health? We cannot do anything with that. We do not buy it. Yeah, I know that we can go to the doctor, but we don't know whether we're going to be healthy right away after we come back from the doctor. So health is very important. This is the most precious thing that we should put it as a priority. We should take care of our health. Yeah, in this situation, what is that? Money is not as important as our health. If you have a lot of money, but we are, we are not healthy, it's just useless. To be healthy is much more important. So health, we cannot buy it. We need to own it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you agree that health, we cannot buy. Good. Timer.
Um. Probably we can still have one, Andre.
I still have got one, 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 four, Andre.
Yes. But, yes.
Ah. Life doesn't get easier, especially during this pandemic. We get stronger. Life doesn't get easier. Especially during this pandemic, we get stronger. You going to answer directly or thirty seconds?
I'm ready now, yeah. In our life, especially in school life, yeah, I, I believe each of you really relate to this because, um, when I was in kindergarten, I was really afraid of going to primary school. Because I thought that things would be so different and I would learn more subjects. But when I was in primary school, things weren't exactly as I imagined. They're even better. But again, when I go from primary school, I still had the same feeling. I was afraid of going to junior high schools. Even though I saw some friends were excited to wear new uniforms and also to meet new friends. But what I was, I always thinking was I would learn more difficult subjects, complicated subjects. And it happened again and again, yeah? From going, uh, from one level of education to the next level of educations. But one thing for sure, when you are in that situations, when you are already in, like in a stage where things and problems get complicated, you're actually get your, uh, intuition, yeah, to seek for help, to seek for guidance, to overcome every, uh, problems in your life. And I believe in your career life and also in your, uh, social life and in life, you could also get all the supports as long as you're willing to learn. So never, never be afraid, no matter how difficult life was, loud life is, you're always be able to solve any problems. Back to you, Tom. Back to you. Table topic, master.
Table topic, Tom later on. Thank you very much, Andre. I would like to ask the timer whether they are all qualified. So ladies and gentlemen, you can vote.
Yeah, I already put on the chat list, chat box, that everybody are eligible to be voted.
So somebody is going to meet to send a poll or they have to send the vote to anybody?
Later, after the evaluation session.
Oh, later, okay. Thank you very much. Now, I would like to return the control back to our handsome and single Tom.
Wow, you definitely need to say the single one. So the handsome is okay, but the single, I think it doesn't really.
It's a rare, it's a rare.
I'm helping you.
Okay, so thank you, everyone. Now, we will have a short break for three minutes. Before our short break, I will have the, the photo session. So everyone, please turn on your video. So today I will try the new one for, which is the immersive view. Later on, you will see. Okay, so for the first post, I think Dede, can you turn on your video? And for the first post is the normal post, and the second post is the not turning post, the not turning post, because it is not day today. So for the first post, I will count for three, one, two, three. Okay, now please prepare for the second post for the not turning post. So I will now run for the. Uh, so please prepare your not turning post. Okay, I will count for three, one. one, two, three. Okay, thank you, everyone. Back to so, it is me again, so. Uh, now we will go to the second, the break time, so we will come back at